Good morning and welcome to the June 4, 2019 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Roll call please.
Supervisor Bronson, Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Miller here, Supervisor Valdez.
Present.
Chairman Elias.
Presente, I'm present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Very good. We have Pastor Richard Jones from St. James United Methodist Church here with us today to offer the invocation. Thank you for being here with us. And the pledge of allegiance will be offered by Supervisor Bronson. So everybody who's able to, could you please stand? Pastor.
Would you bow your heads with me as I pray? Dear wise and loving God, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings you've given to us. Thank you for life itself, for our health, that we need to fulfill our callings, for providing for our needs. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our responsibilities. Thanks as well for the many freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to pray for their governing authorities, since you have established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for this assembled board. I'm asking that you would graciously give them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them this morning. Please give assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work here. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the millions do the lie, let the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate from sin.
Thank you very much Pastor. We have one change to today's agenda, which is a correction. On the regular agenda, page two, item five should read monsoon safety awareness week. So it's a correction to the spelling of the last name of Courtney Slanicker. Sorry about that. We misspelled it and so now we got it right. And the appropriate parties have been chastised. No, I'm lying. Without objections, we'll consider the agenda amended. Gidget is here with pause for pause. Gidget, why don't you come over here and have your friend talk on your behalf?
The board, good morning everyone. This is Gidget. Gidget, come in. She's gonna hang around. She's like loves people as you can see. She has kind of a sad story. She was adopted and her adopter and her were a perfect match, amazing. And then her adopter passed away, so she's back at PAC. And it's actually to make things a little bit happier, it's kind of timely because we have a great special happening at PAC right now. Anything that is over 30 pounds and at least four months or older, as far as a dog goes, you can name your own price. And when it comes to cats, right now cats are, they're free to adopt as well. And for kittens and puppies, they're only $50. So we have several different specials going on right now at Pima Animal Care Center. And we are looking for fosters too because we are in kitten and puppy season. She likes children as you can see. And we need some help with some of those bottle babies that keep coming in. So if permanent, you know, dog, cat, not your thing, short-term fostering, we really need those folks too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, given the proclamations we have on our agenda, maybe it's a Canada dog. I don't know, but would certainly look good in red. I'm sure Gidget would in fact, you know, so just making suggestions up here. We have a number of presentations and proclamations that we're going to do. Item five, I'll go ahead and move the item for monsoon safety awareness week. Motion and a second discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Supervisor Christie is going to present this proclamation to a whole host of people. Heidi Shawo, Griselda Moya Flores, Courtney Slanicker, Michael Allen, Mike Sagara, and God, I don't know. And is there anybody else that I missed? If not, please come on forward and we'll get this taken care of. It's good to see you all. Hello, how are you doing? We're all anxious to hear about the status of monsoons. You're the ultimate prognosticator, Martin. So we're gonna... Thank you all for coming. Supervisor Christie, please.
Good morning and thank you. I'm pleased to present this proclamation as a native Tucsonian. This is something that many of us look forward to every year as the monsoon season. However, with it comes a lot of potential danger and we certainly are acknowledging the awareness we need to exhibit this morning with this proclamation. Whereas the National Weather Service monitors severe weather and provides warnings to people within Pima County 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the National Weather Service works in close cooperation with local media outlets to provide critical weather information as quickly as possible to protect lives and property from the hazards of severe weather. And whereas, due to its location and geography, Pima County frequently experiences thunderstorm-generated wind, dust, electrical storms, and dangerous flash floods during the summer monsoon, all of which pose a considerable threat to the community. And whereas, public safety during the monsoon begins with teamwork between community partners and emergency responder agencies who unite to promote flood safety awareness and advance the lifesaving message of turn around, don't drown. And whereas, the National Weather Service works in conjunction with the Pima County Office of Emergency Management, Pima County Regional Flood Control District, Pima County Sheriff's Department, Pima County Department of Environmental Quality, the American Red Cross, and Tucson Electric Power, as well as local media powers, partners, excuse me, volunteer organizations, and other federal, state, local, and tribal agencies to inform the community about what to do when severe weather strikes during the monsoon. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of June 9 through June 14, 2019 to be monsoon safety awareness week and encourages all citizens to equate themselves with severe weather safety information and to use these lifesaving recommendations to protect themselves and their families from the hazards that accompany the summer monsoon, passed and adopted this fourth day of June 2019. Congratulations. Thank you.
Ken is over here.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks to the board once again for giving us this proclamation for monsoon safety awareness week. And as was mentioned in the reading, it does take teamwork to promote safety and you can see testament here by all the great partners we have here in Pima County that have joined with us all today in accepting this proclamation. I just want to put in one plug for the monsoon safety fair, which happens on June 10th, first part of monsoon safety awareness week that will be at Park Place from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And many of us will be there as well to talk about safety during the monsoon. So once again, I thank you. If you'd like the annual prognostication for the monsoon...
Yes, please. I was gonna say, Ken, you're not off the hook. We gotta know, when are they gonna start?
Well, it looks like, you know, we've had a wet winter and early spring and that has kind of delayed the warming that we normally see, which will probably mean a delayed onset to the monsoon. That doesn't mean we should let our guard down though, because with the period of heat that'll come in before that starts, and we may only have isolated thunderstorms here and there to kick off the monsoon, any one of those storms capable of producing damaging microburst winds and flash flooding and of course dangerous lightning strikes, we want to be alert for that. And really, the monsoon outlook this year is a two-part story. The latter part of the monsoon, we are expecting an uptick in, an upswing in precipitation toward, we get into the latter part of August and into September. So we'll look forward to getting more rains at that point.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Anyone else have any...
And on behalf of the Office of Pima County Office of Emergency Management, we encourage every citizen in Pima County to go to our website at myalerts.pima.gov and opt in to receive emergency alert notifications. And I will leave some of these flyers up front in case you missed the plug. You can get that information up front. Thank you.
I would just comment that look at all these folks here and all the different institutions that they represent. It gives us a good idea of what a complex operation really learning and working on safety for our monsoons is about. And so very proud of all these different organizations that are represented here today. Very good. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate all your work too. Turn around, don't drown. Makes a lot of sense. So our next presentation is for Canada Day and we have Glenn Williamson, Honorary Council of Canada for Arizona and CEO of the Canada Arizona Business Council here today. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Supervisor Bronson's gonna take care of this for us, so please council, appreciate you being here and if you'd come forward, we'll set you up with a nice autographed picture of me that I'm sure you'll want to keep for many years.
Come on up there, Patrick.
Whereas, Pima County, the nation of Canada, and our respective citizens have enjoyed a long and enduring friendship with longstanding commercial, military, and interpersonal relationships. And whereas, Pima County is home to Canadian companies such as Bombardier, Fortis Energy, Tucson Electric Power, Stan Tech, Madame A. Holmes, Circle K. Couche-Tard, Symbiotic Wear, and many other businesses that provide jobs for Pima County residents and Canadian investment in our communities. And whereas, many Pima County companies such as Raytheon, Cade Industries, M3 Engineering do substantial business in Canada and add significantly to the 3.6 billion in annual trade and services that occurs between the state of Arizona and Canada. And whereas, many Canadians have chosen to make Pima County their home, where Pima County is a member of the Canadian, Canada, Arizona Business Council, which seeks to strengthen economic tourism and friendship ties between the state of Arizona and the great nation of Canada. And whereas, July 1, celebrated as Canada Day, commemorates the establishment of Canada as a nation in 1867, and that it is in the public interest of Pima County residents to gain knowledge, maintain interest, and understand the impact and importance of the Canadian relationship in our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Monday, July 1, 2019 to be Canada Day in Pima County and urges all Pima County citizens, business leaders, civic organizations to learn about the benefits of the relationship between Canada and Pima County and to recognize the intrinsic ties of friendship, commerce, visitation, and mutual defense that bind us together, passed and adopted this fourth day of June 2019. And thank you so much for all the good work that you do and all the economic interests that you bring here. And we know Canada is one of our favorite trading partners, you and Mexico, and that's what makes this continent so economically prosperous. So thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
And if you'd like to say a few words?
Absolutely.
And what do you do on Canada Day in Canada?
Party like rock stars. Supervisor Bronson, Supervisors, Chairman, thank you very much on behalf of the Government of Canada for this honor. It is something that we cherish across the United States. Always remember that while we are very close to the southern border, Canada and Mexico are also extraordinarily close. And the microcosm of the confluence that occurs here in southern Arizona is something that Canada is very, very interested in. About 100,000 trucks cross the border and go straight to Canada with Mexican produce and go through this region right here. So not only do Canadians love coming down here, they absolutely adore doing business down here. And it, the weather is one of the big things, but the reality is the people of this county really, really extend an olive branch to Canadians. And I hear it all the time. And I congratulate you all as citizens of this region for your hospitality and your ability to take international people at face value for everything that goes on in North America. Thank you very much.
I would say go Raptors, but I'm rooting for Golden State, so I'm sorry. I just had to say it, sorry. You know, full disclosure and all of that, right?
Okay, our next proclamation is item two on the addendum. World Blood Donor Day. Chair, move the item. Motion and a second discussion. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Supervisor Valdez is going to present this proclamation to, let's see. Courtney Slanicker gets another shot, Samantha Bivins, Patricia Fisher, Robert Ochoa, Afsoon Rohani, Karen Fontes, Mike Sagara, and that's it? Come on forward, please.
Hello. Hi, how are you doing?
It's a pleasure to be here and to read the proclamation. And it goes this way. Whereas, the American Red Cross has served Arizona for more than a century and has a Southern Arizona chapter based in Tucson. And whereas, the American Red Cross and its Southern Arizona chapter provide an array of disaster relief and assistance and collect processes and distribute lifesaving and life-enhancing blood products. And whereas, someone in the United States needs blood every two seconds and this need is constant, not variable. And whereas, blood is perishable with a shelf life of only 42 days, so the blood supply must be replenished constantly. And whereas, a significant percentage of the Red Cross blood collection comes from high schools and colleges which lack student donors in the summer. And whereas, while the Red Cross Southern Arizona chapter urgently needs all types of blood, it faces a critical shortage of type O blood, the type hospitals need the most. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims Friday, June 14, 2019 to be World Blood Donor Day and encourages all Pima County residents to donate blood to the Red Cross Southern Arizona chapter and notes that they can give again 56 days after the donation, passed and adopted this fourth day of June 2019.
Thank you Supervisor. Thank you Board of Supervisors, Chairman, and thank you to the audience for any of you that are donors out there. This is a critical mission and here in Arizona, we wouldn't be able to respond to all the critical needs at our hospitals without donors like you. And now I'll turn it over to Patricia.
Thank you. And I thank you also for having us here today in honor of the World Donor Recognition Day as well on June 14th. So thank you to the county for that. And I have two of my supervisors here for our fixed sites here in Tucson, from Broadway location, Afsoon Rohani and Robert Ochoa in the foothills area. And so I'll turn it over to them.
I want to thank the board for having us here. I just want to thank our current blood and platelet donors that donate day in and day out, that fulfill the hospital needs. And welcome all the new blood and platelet donors to our sites and to our blood drives. The foothills hours were open six days a week. The only day we're closed is Thursdays. Broadway and Colb site were open seven days a week. So we look forward to seeing you guys there.
Also, thank you so much. And I want to mention that at the fixed site, we collect everything from whole blood, from platelet, and double red. So platelet is very, very, because it's only five days shelf life, so we always in need for platelet. And you know, we use platelet a lot for cancer patients. So it's very important that, you know, if you're a new donor or never donated, you know, come to the site, you know, and visit us, you know, maybe you can, you know, be a good candidate for, as a donor, to donate whole blood, platelet, or double red if you are a true hero. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Karen Fontes. I'm with the donor recruitment department in biomedical services. And our job is the mobile blood drives you see around Tucson. That is what we do for southern Arizona and northern Arizona. And our job right now is to get as many as we can of the 38% of the United States population that can donate to donate. We value our regular donors. As you've heard, we can donate every 56 days. And we truly value our new donors. So please come in. You can find a blood drive on redcrossblood.org. They are all over Tucson, believe me, all over Tucson. You can help by donating. You can help by setting up a blood drive. You can set up a blood drive through your organization, through your business, in memory of, at the high schools. It's very, very important. Again, blood cannot be manufactured. We depend on donors. And I guarantee that every single person in this room knows somebody or they themselves have needed a blood product. And imagine if that was not available. And it's so important. So please, thank you for all you do. Thank you for your future endeavors and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to say thank you very much to the folks putting together World Blood Donor Day, which is again Friday, June 14, 2019. And of course, Transylvania Night in Arizona starts at sundown on the 14th, so... That's a joke, you guys. It's about vampires. I'm too rich, Fashi, that's the problem. Okay, we're gonna move on from here. I promise you.
Yeah, not gonna quit my day job.
Believe me. Well, I might get booted out, but that's another story. Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program presentation to be offered by Supervisor Bronson. Please Supervisor.
You know, when we see red, usually we're talking red for ad. But this is actually a part of red for ad, if I am not mistaken. It's the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. And we have a number of people we're going to give recognition to, but let me read you the general statement regarding the certificate of recognition. Pima County District Three Supervisor Sharon Bronson, the Pima County Board of Supervisors, and County Administrator Chuck Huckleberry present this document to those who are standing up here today, who are at the University of Arizona's Pima County Extension Food Nutrition Education Program. We're honoring their service in working to improve the health, food resource management, food safety, and food security of families with limited resources in Pima County. For 50 years, this program has been reaching some of the most vulnerable populations in Pima County and helping them to use their resources to keep healthy food in their homes, engage their families, cultivate youth, and transform communities. This unique program within the USDA and the University of Arizona's Land Grant University provide a strong research base for education and outreach. On behalf of the people of Pima County and the Board of Supervisors, we offer our sincere appreciation of your community-based, relationship-driven, hands-on education that has evolved and remained relevant to how people live, learn, work, shop, and engage in physical activity today. Congratulations on all you do presented this day, the fourth of June, 2019. And this is Michelle here. Here you go, Michelle. Joni, there's her two. Okay, who's Margaret? Okay, Margaret, there we go. Okay, there's Michelle. Joni, now there's another one here. Okay, Scotty.
Scotty's over there.
Scotty? Yeah, Vima Scotty.
She's the boss.
You're the boss, huh?
I didn't have my red.
Oh, I see. And Dan?
Thank you.
Martha? Yvonne Martinez? There we go. And Kim? All right. I know one of you wants to say something. Who would like to say something?
It's with you, Dan.
Thank you Supervisor Bronson, Chairman Elias, Supervisors, County Administrators. I'm Dan McDonald from the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension. We're celebrating 50 years of our nutrition program that comes out of the United States Department of Agriculture through the university, but it's really a partnership between Cooperative Extension here in Pima County, the university, and Pima County, our partner. They actually supply us, provide us with the buildings that we work out of, including the garden kitchen and our offices up at Tucson Village Farm. And then they also help us with our operating expenses. So it is a true partnership and we thank you for these many years of support. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to say anything? No? No, no. Dangerous. Dangerous. You're doing some amazing programs. We participated in them and really helping kids here in our community. So thank you.
Come on, let's get all those nice red shirts in there. You guys are from Canada? You're rooting for Toronto. I knew it. I knew it. I'm obsessed with the playoffs, I guess. Thank you Supervisor Bronson. Excellent way to recognize people's good work. Okay, we're on to call to the public. And let's see, we have about 10... And let's see, we have about 10, 12 speakers that have signed up, maybe a little less than that. We should get through it in less than an hour. However, if we go over an hour, we'll hold the rest of the speakers till the end of the meeting. I would ask you to please not shout out from your seat, or you will be removed. Please do not say anything vulgar when you're up here at the microphone. That again will have you thrown out. And please be respectful of others as well in the room. So, I hate to go through those rules every time, but it's important that we do because we've had some significantly bad behavior here in the past few months during call to the audience. I just want to make sure everybody knows the rules before we get started. So, our first speaker's gonna be Lou Durand. Thank you for coming, please come on over here and, and give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. You can face the other way, face the Board of Supervisors and pull that microphone towards you. You are addressing the board is, is the point.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. And you can stand a little over that way, that way the microphone picks you up better. And then we get the picture really right on the screens and, you know, we could get a close-up if you want.
No, thank you.
All right, we'll let you go then.
My name is Lou Durand, I've been in early childhood education for more than 20 years, and I'm currently a Quality First Coach, which means I get to go into childcare centers every day and help guide directors and teachers and home care providers towards quality education. We know that quality childcare has great impacts on children. The Perry Preschool Project has been going for over 50 years, and we know, looking back, that it has great outcomes for children well into adulthood. But the sad thing is, not all children have access to quality care, in, especially here in Arizona. Across the state, there are thousands of preschools waiting to get into quality programs, and that translates into tens of thousands of children. In fact, only one in four children in Arizona have access to high-quality education. We are also asking teachers to provide care, quality care, at higher and higher levels, asking them to return to school, asking them to engage children at higher and higher levels, but we're paying them minimum wage. I would like to see Arizona step up and fully fund early childhood education for every child and pay teachers a professional wage, and I'd like to see Tucson lead that way. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. Our next speaker's gonna be Mary Swallow. Mary, thank you for being here with us. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, if you could please give us your name for the record.
My name is Mary Swallow. Thank you for listening to me today.
Certainly.
As a resident and property taxpayer in Pima County for the last 13 years, I strongly urge the Board of Supervisors to, to support the Pima County Preschool Investment Program. I have five family members under the age of five in Kentucky and Indiana, and I understand how important early education is for them, and how important having safe and stimulating and affordable childcare is to their parents. While none of my family members would benefit because they live out of state, this is the right thing for families and children in our, in Pima County. Early education has been shown not only to have a positive effect on children academically, but to have long-term positive benefits throughout their lives. While I understand that people want quick fixes and tend to look at the short term, I implore the board to be visionary and recognize the long-term educational, social, and economic benefits this program would have in Pima County. Thank you for your time, and please support PCPIP.
Thank you. Very good. Our next speaker is Beth Morrison. Beth, there you are, thank you for being here today. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, if you'd give us your name for the record, please.
Sure. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Beth Morrison, and I come today wearing two hats. One is a CEO of Our Family Services, a local nonprofit with a mission to eliminate youth and family homelessness, and to strengthen the community. And my second hat is a citizen and resident of Pima County residing in District Number One. With my professional hat on, I come to represent the hundreds of families that our family serves, that our family serves each year. Families who have identified the lack of access to affordable childcare and early education as a significant barrier in their ability to reach financial stability. This barrier often presents them from obtaining employment or achieving their educational goals. Not being able to afford, afford the basic need for their children, one that many of us take for granted, causes these parents to have to make tough choices. The Pima County Preschool Initiative Program can help these families today be able to move forward. With my personal citizen and taxpayer hat on, I stand before you asking you to be bold leaders. The safe choice would be to pay for roads and not preschool. The bold and courageous choice would be to do the exact opposite. Quality preschool is not a hot potato, someone needs to embrace it and get it started. You, the Pima County Board of Supervisors, have the opportunity to stand up to the plate and be the one to get the program launched with my taxpayer dollars. Playing it safe doesn't help the families in most need. Yes, I too want smooth roads, but filling a pothole is a temporary fix to an ongoing infrastructure need. Educating a child, as all the research indicates, fulfills a long-term need for our community and our society. And by providing early childhood education to children, let's also not forget that this means their parents can achieve their educational goals and get to work, putting more tax dollars into the solution for roads and other community needs. So, be bold, take a risk, and have the courage to step out of your box, fund PCPIP, and let's let Pima County take a stand and stand up for education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very eloquent. Our next speaker is Dr. Howard Shore. Howard, how are you doing, it's nice to see you. I'm glad you could be with us today. You have three minutes, and just give us your name for the record, and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention your father-in-law, Mario Edron.
Oh, yes.
Because he's always in my heart, and the work that he did here in Pima County was very valuable to all of us.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that as well, because I see Virginia's here today too. Thank you Howard, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
My name is Dr. Howard Shore. I, Chairman Alias, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak about the importance of access to high-quality pre-kindergarten education, and to request your support to address this issue in the 2020 fiscal budget. I've been a child clinical psychologist for more than 40 years, most of that here in Tucson, at Thomas Davis Medical Centers, Catalina Behavioral Health Services, the Amphi School District, and the Community Partnership Southern Arizona. From a developmental psychology perspective, two of the most important areas of skill growth for three- and four-year-olds are language skills and social skills. This successful development depends upon a child being exposed to others who use broad vocabulary and adult sentence structure. Failure to have these experiences can result in long, in lifelong retardation of verbal skills and verbal skill development. This is also the time when the concepts of friendship and sharing, the concepts of taking turns develop. When children first want to please friends and be like other, and be like their friends, and learn to follow, occurs during this important developmental time. It's a time when the foundation for self-esteem is laid and empathy starts to develop. High-quality pre-kindergarten is an ideal opportunity to teach children how to manage both emotions and problem-solving, especially when they're upset. It's also a crucial period in the development of resiliency. The important, the potential impact of high-quality pre-kindergarten on social skill development and future success is enormous. Three-year-old children's brains are adept at becoming multilingual. Therefore, children raised in monoling- monolingual households will get a particular boost from proposed access to high-quality early childhood education. Providing the opportunity, this also will provide the opportunity for skilled staff to spot developmental delays or disabilities and direct families to available resources, thereby accelerating remediation. The more vulnerable a child's circumstances, the more likely and extensive the impact of high-quality pre-kindergarten. They are less likely to require special time and attention from teachers and others as they mature. Again, thank you for your service to our community, and for your willingness to join with the community, the public, and private education institutions, business leaders, and law enforcement to invest in this all-important, high-quality, pre-kindergarten education program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Howard, appreciate it. I like that shirt. I think it would fit me too. I'm just saying. I'd be willing to, sure, ma'am. Our next speaker's gonna be Annie Pollak, Anne Pollak. Please come forward, Anne. And I was gonna name the, the institute, but I can't remember how to pronounce that word.
Hi, I'm Anne Pollak, Dr. Anne Pollak, and the name of our institute is the Capoeira Institute Southwest. And I wanted to come today for a couple of reasons. One is just in general to thank Pima County for supporting the arts, and also more specifically telling you about some of the work we do and letting you know what could help in terms of us being able to do, you know, add to the benefit of our work. So, Capoeira is an Afro-Brazilian martial art, it's kicks, it's escapes. We work for over 20, no, 15 or 20 years, I've been doing programs in Pima County libraries. And we also work with a lot of schools across Tucson and Pima County. I've done programs all the way out to Ajo and, you know, Nogales and all over. I also travel around the country and teach. Once a year, we have an annual event in which we bring people from Mexico, people from Canada, and also Brazil, and as far away as Taiwan, we've had visitors to our events. And these visitors, we bring them in because they are masters of this art. And the, the art involves not only martial arts, but it's also music, and just gives kids and adults. We start at age three, we go all the way through adult, and these programs really give like the better balance, better stability, physical agility, but also cultural awareness. You know, Tucson's a very diverse community, and what's really cool about Capoeira is it brings people from all different cultures together to be able to do this. And so, what I would like to ask Pima County, I mean, we, we have participated in some awesome events such as Tucson Meet Yourself, I think we're in our 11th or 12th year of performing there. We also have performed at the Tucson Festival of Books since it began, and we've been nominated for a Governor's Arts Award, and most recently, I've been nominated for a Master Apprentice Award. And so, we have that support, but we are limited in how much benefit we can give to especially developing school programs because of limits in our funding. So, I'm just asking as a broad generalization that if there are any, you know, ways that Pima County can create more grants for the arts, that would be awesome. And as a last thing, I just wanted to show you briefly, I don't know which way to show it. So, here's Brazil, this is where Capoeira started. Now, Capoeira is every star all over the world. So, it's really spread all over the world. And then, we've had programs, oops.
You have used up all your time, so if you could finish up real quickly, I appreciate it.
Okay, I just have two seconds.
I like your pictures though.
We, we start, this boy's, he's four years old, he just got his first belt. Here's a group of the little kids that started. We go, we do a lot of work with teens. And here's just, I, I don't know if you can see these, but these are different performances. This is an Afro-Brazilian dance that we did. Here's some of the kids learning to play, to do drumming and performing at Tucson Meet Yourself. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. And I've seen you perform many times.
Oh, cool.
I always enjoy it.
Thank you.
But I can't quite get that out of my capiro.
Capoeira.
Capoeira.
Capoeira, yeah.
Capoeira.
If you think about it, every vowel is, is pronounced, so it's capoeida. Yeah, all right, thank you very much.
All right, stay cool, yeah. Bet there's a lot of people from Golden State that go to your performances too. Let's see, our next speaker's going to be Adrian Alavi. Oh, there you are, right in front of me. Should've known it. You have about three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, but I need you to state your name for the record, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adrian Alavi, and I'm a member of the Pima County 5G Awareness Coalition. I'll be talking about fifth-generation wireless deployment in Pima County and the importance of it, or of the issue. So, people who are electrically, electrically hypersensitive are particularly at risk as they may not be able to tolerate the radiation transmissions from small cell antennas located on public right-of-way eastments by their residences. They may be forced to flee their homes, yet may not be able to find a safe place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry I messed up your name, but you did good, thank you. Okay, so our next speaker's gonna be Elizabeth Kelly. Thank you for being here with us, Elizabeth, it's always good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
And you know the routine, you have three minutes, but you gotta give us your name for the record.
Certainly. Good morning, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Kelly, and I direct the Electromagnetic Safety Alliance, which is a nonprofit federally recognized state corporation here in Tucson. I'm going to give you something this morning. This is a petition from the Pima County 5G Awareness Coalition. I advise the Pima County 5G Awareness Coalition. Last August, we started collecting signatures on this petition. It now has 389 signatures from residents of Pima County, of Tucson, Arizona, of Oro Valley, and other towns within the county. In March, we held a town hall meeting, and we're fortunate enough to have Tom Drazowski there. Tom, who is the head of planning and zoning for the county, gave a presentation and was very helpful in providing factual information about what the county is doing within the rule of law to administer the new FCC 5G rules and the state law HB 2365, which are designed to accelerate the deployment of fifth-generation wireless. We are very concerned that this technology is potentially very dangerous, harmful to our health, our privacy, our security, and threatens our very democracy. This is a serious matter, it's not getting enough attention, and it should. 5G small cell antennas are currently being installed around Tucson. Macro towers for 4G are being upgraded and installed, and 5G antennas will be installed shortly. Tucson intends to be a smart city, and very soon, we're going to see 5G operating in Arizona, in Southern Arizona. It's already operating in Phoenix and Scottsdale and about 30 other cities or parts of cities across the United States and around the world. And there's huge pushback from local government, from national local government organizations, the Natural Resources Defense Council, and 11 tribal Indian organizations. These rules preempt local government control over their deciding, management, and modification of cell towers. Right now, it's just the small cell towers, but FCC is planning to promulgate new rules that would also exclude macro towers and relay antennas, which should be installed on rooftops. In 2009, three of you were here when you passed a resolution that said that you are concerned about the health and welfare of the people of Tucson, of Arizona, of Pima County, excuse me, and that you are calling, did call for the repeal of Section 704 of the Federal Telecommunications Act, which passed in 1996, and preempted local control over taking health into account when denying a permit application, only in that setting. That preemption is still there, now we have many more. We need you to use your existing power within the rule of law to work with us and the other citizens in Pima County. citizens in Pima County to protect our health and ensure our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Our next speaker is Diana Enson. Is that, did I get it close, Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, and I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. I'm Diane Enson, member of the Pima County 5G Awareness Coalition, and for twenty-five years, I had a successful career as a nature and wildlife photographer. So, it's very important to realize that in addition to the impact on human health, this new fifth-generation technology will have untested effects on plants, trees, animals, soil, and a congressional assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act never took place. There are EMF exposure standards nowhere in the world that ensure the protection of nature, plants, trees, animals, us, microbes, living things. Under the 5G deployment plan, trees in our front yards and streets can be removed to improve signal coverage and access into our homes. 5G wavelengths range between a few millimeters to a few centimeters. There will be an increase in the coupling of waves with critical substructures of living tissues of highest importance for survival of animals, pollinators, and all of us human beings. Some of the, I'm also on the Board of Supervisors for Heal of Southern Arizona, and these members, many of them, are already suffering from radio frequency sickness caused by wireless radiation. And this is going to be military-strength radiation, placed on top of what we already have. Some of the recent scientific publications show that EMF affects living organisms at levels well below international and national guidelines. The effects are, include cancer risk, and we're already in an epidemic for cancer, cellular stress, harmful free radicals, genetic damages, structural functional changes of the reproductive system, and of course, women and children are mostly affected, learning and memory deficits, sleep problems, neurological disorders, negative impacts. The damage goes way beyond the human race into plant and animal pollinators. So, it's just absolutely a critical issue, as these cell towers are already being set up in Tucson, and this needs to be stopped and addressed, and I implore all of you to do everything you possibly can to ensure that the people of Pima County are going to be safe from this fifth-generation wireless technology that is military-strength. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Okay, our next speaker's going to be Heidi Miller. Oh, there you are. Thank you for being here, Ms. Miller. And you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, cool green glasses and all, and just give us your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Heidi Miller. This is Milo, and this is Ivy. We live at 3827 East White Hill Way. We live behind a fire station who, now, my husband and I just moved to this place, and we set our investments into livelihood. We have just planted an orchard, and we built a wood shop, and this is what we're going to do. And of course, our home is an investment as well. One day, though, we found out that our fire station was planning a cell tower within seventy meters of homes, and it's two hundred meters from me, and this is well within the well-documented known radius of harm. In a single day, it went up, and now it disrupts my beloved ancient mountain view from my entire property. I cannot see beyond its massive construction, which is soon to worsen due to its mono-eucalyptus design, which has branches ten feet across all the way down, and it also has the option to build a second carrier on top of it. I have the pictures here, and I'd like to submit them for you. This is all despite the outcry of all twenty of us who surround this mast, and we're not ignorant to the well-documented ill effects of living near cell towers, and no one wants to see our ancient mountain view deface so grossly. We must act now to shield our windows and our walls from, Milo, come here.
He's fine, don't worry.
I don't know if there's plugs or anything over there. Yeah, yeah, and then there might be plugs there. Anyway, this is a necessary cost, but it's unmanageable to us at this time, since we just set our investments into our home. We didn't know, of course, that this was going to happen. It was decided in 2017, and I don't think anyone had the capacity to tell us that before we moved in. So, anyway, my children may not develop normally. Any one of us could become ill within just a few short years of this exposure. I don't want to bury my children, right? No one, not one of the so-called protective agencies has decided that they could do anything to protect us, because the FCC limits are the highest in the world, but that's insane, because they don't protect from any harmful effects that are not limited to thermal, other than thermal mechanisms, yet everyone is married to this limit, and it's utterly obsolete. The only thing that stands between me and a healthy life and apparently is a great deal of cash and this FCC standard. So, when I call and I ask, is this safe, who says it's safe, and how did you decide? And I did, I've been on the phone for weeks with your agencies and multiple others, and they say, well, go call the FCC. And then I call the FCC, and they say, well, go call your local government. So, I call my local government, and they tell me again, go call the FCC. We don't have any control over that. So, it's a maddening game of phone call. Everyone says that. They have no control over any of this stuff, which is going to sicken my children. I don't have time to wait. This is already here in my front yard. So, on the FCC, I called them, and they told me that we know that cell phones can be dangerous, and the only thing that they can tell me is that our standards should save us from having our eyeballs cooked instantly, but that's about it. There are all kinds of documented harm that we're not protected from.
Excuse me, you have used up your time, so please finish up, okay?
Yes. Now, are these corporations so ungovernable that none of my leaders can act to protect me and my children from the known risks of imminent harm? And this is my reality, and I'm not free from harm in my own home, apparently by two hands, my government and a private corporation. It's unacceptable.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker's going to be Jamie Hall. Ms. Hall, thank you for being here. You know the routine?
Yes, sir.
Give us your name, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, sounds good. Good morning. My name is Jamie Hall. I'm a member of the Pima County 5G Awareness Coalition. Thank you for being here, everyone. At the urging of the wireless communications industry, the Federal Communications Commission, FCC, and the U.S. Congress are authorizing an accelerated deployment of the 5G generation wireless technology and the Internet of Things. Arizona has enacted legislation that preamps local zoning review and approval of permits. Small-cell 5G antennas less than fifty feet tall that will be located on public right-of-way easements close to our residences. There is a lot of pushback nationwide, as over eleven lawsuits have been filed in federal court to challenge the FCC 5G rules for federal overreach, including national local government associations like the U.S. Council of Mayors, the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, individual cities and counties, the National Resources Defense Fund, and eleven Indian tribal organizations. The deployment of 5G will continue unabated pending a court decision. We request that public officials for Pima County lead citizens in a public discussion of the merits of an alternative option, such as a community-owned fiber-optic network, to the premises of our homes and businesses, and explore additional measures for keeping citizens safe from harm or injury because of inadequate protections over security, privacy, and health. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Appreciate you being here again. Our next speaker is Jerry Otoboni.
You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, and I need you to give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in Oro Valley. And the first thing I want to say, oh, good morning, as I want to say, I want to thank these women so much for coming to speak about this 5G. It is disastrous. It is so horrible, they can affect even your houses inside, everything, and it's just horrible. Anyway, so I hope you guys will do something to get rid of it. Anyway, I want to thank Sharon Bronson for missing me the last time. I was at a school function. And I also want to thank, let's see, thank the Board and Mr. Huckleberry for voting to provide funds for the street repair. But, as many people have said, if you who were on the Board twenty years ago had started managing the roads, we would not have to have the problems and expenses we have now. I heard on the media that Pinal County, who has better roads than we do, is advertising for companies to come to Pinal County. And of course, hindsight's 2020, their property taxes are lower than Pima County, which businesses and their employees will love. And so, many businesses have left Pima County. Thank you. And again, please do something about this 5G.
Very well. Thank you for being here. That concludes call to the audience. We have three items on executive session, four items maybe, three? Three, I was right the first time. I'll entertain a motion to move it to exec.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, discussion, objections. We'll be back in a few minutes, folks. Thank you very much. A motion in a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to hearings, franchises, licenses, and permits, items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And seeing I have no cards that have been submitted, chair will move to close the public hearing and approve those items.
Second.
Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Development Services. These are hearings also. Item seventeen, a rezoning resolution, two thousand nineteen forty-four. Item eighteen is a rezoning ordinance, ordinance two thousand nineteen fifteen. And item nineteen, we'll, we'll just hear, why don't we just take care of seventeen and eighteen first?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, on item seventeen, if there's no one to speak on or against this resolution, I move to close the public hearing and to accept the rezoning resolution number two thousand nineteen dash forty-four, see not C zero nine dash zero seven dash twenty-seven.
Okay.
Noseneck Davis Camino Derero rezoning.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item seventeen, including resolution two thousand nineteen dash four, case number CO nine zero seven two seven. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item eighteen, this is a rezoning ordinance, including ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, unless there's someone to speak on this issue of rezoning ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing and move the item, the ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash fifteen, P one eight RZ zero 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 one zero, Hakami East Old Spanish Trail rezoning be accepted.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve item eighteen, close the public hearing, including ordinance two thousand nineteen dash fifteen. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're on to item nineteen. This is a concurrent plan amendment and rezoning resolution and ordinance, case number P one eight CR zero 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 one.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one in the audience who wishes to address us on the side of the opposition, move to close the public hearing.
And approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash forty-five and adopt ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash sixteen.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're in such an agreeable mood that we're already on to the addendum. Isn't that nice?
It's early yet.
It's early yet. Yeah, you're right. This next one ought to be a show. Okay, we're on to item six, consideration and discussion. Supervisor Miller, please.
Mr. Chairman, why would you say that? Hopefully, it's not. Let's just put it that way. I have gone through the budget. We've all been through the budget process, and what I'm going to propose here today is that we go back to the drawing board and try to propose a budget that is, that is tax neutral, so that the taxpayers don't have to bear the burden of another increase in taxes. A budget that accounts for rewarding the hardworking county employees with the raises as proposed by Supervisor Elias at the last meeting. And I know that tough decisions were made during the recession, and the employees didn't get those raises that they deserved. And so, the budget, what we need is a budget that is making progress, fixing the roads, which I'm really pleased with the twenty-six million that is being considered, and a budget that is more responsible with our tax dollars, and that won't pass the burden of these additional taxes, as I said earlier, on to the residents of Pima County. First, I'd like to recognize and give credit to all the positives in this year's budget proposal. Supervisor Bronson presented the award at the last meeting to the Finance Department for their work on this, and I have to say it was very well deserved. I really appreciated the, the complete thoroughness. I had very few questions that were unanswered when I came into the boardroom. There weren't many left, so I really appreciated that. It was presented clearly, accurate, and any questions that I did have, people responded very quickly and gave that additional information out. So, I want to thank Mr. Huckleberry and his staff. And I really also agree with and support the pay-as-you-go capital improvement program policy that has been proposed. I think it is a very good step in the right direction to managing our budget without incurring more debt, and that the pay-as-you-go system supports capital projects as funds become available. It should essentially, you know, as we get down to it, remove the element of spending money that we don't have. And, and I think it's a good direction that we're headed in this year. And again, the pavement preservation contribution, the twenty-six million dollars that is under consideration by the board is a great step in the right direction for Pima County roads. I know everyone wants the problem solved yesterday, but as we know, that isn't going to happen. But I think this is really demonstrating to the taxpayers and the people of this community that we're serious about doing it. Is it enough? It never will be. This is going to be an ongoing problem, and we'll be facing it every year. But as the ninety-seven HERF bonds are paid off, which are, I think, roughly eighteen million this year that we're paying that, those monies can be moved into increasing the dollars in the future that can be provided for road repairs. As well as the expectations, at least in the next few years, that HERF revenues will be increasing, will also be helpful. And as we all know, it's going to be an ongoing challenge, and we will, this board will need to collaborate to find this money, even more money, to fix the roads as we move forward. The proposal that I'm putting forward is just that. It's a proposal, a starting point. And I know that Supervisor Validas talked about, we have to begin the conversation. So, I thought if I put this out there a few weeks ahead of time, it gives everyone time to review it, digest it, and decide whether or not it's something that he can support or, or improve upon. It's just a starting point. And, and the first thing I want to start with are the COPS, the Certificates of Participation. And I do have a handout here. I did have it. There it is. The Certificates of Participation are, what I'm seeing is that it is a problem in that we're continuing to incur the debt, and we use these COPS to get around the expenditure limitation. And I do understand that. Mr. Huckleberry explained that in the last meeting about how this is an alternative to work around that, so that we can continue doing the things we need to do. What I'm hoping and I'm proposing is that, you know, for example, we have roughly a hundred and seventeen million outstanding in COPS right now. I have the schedule that Mr. Huckleberry presented that shows that the payoff of that hundred and seventeen million is going to be about a hundred and forty-two million, which is roughly twenty-five million dollars in interest and issuance costs to pay those off. So, what I'd like to see is that we start using fewer of the COPS, maybe forego the capital projects, or try to hold off for a year or two, and save those monies moving forward, invest those monies, get some interest and, and return, and save those monies, and maybe wait a few years before we start making the investments that we'd like to right away. That's a possibility. And so, if we, we just look at that hundred and seventeen million, these were issued over a five-year period, which amounts to about twenty, twenty-three and a half million dollars per year of issuance. So, if we stop issuing those COPS for a year or two, we can earn some interest on those monies that we're using to pay back that twenty-five million roughly per year. We could truly do a pay-as-you-go budget by doing this. And so, that, that is one thing I'd like to look at. The other thing was the Flood Control District, and I will give this copy to you here. This is just a brief summary of what I am proposing. Just one for Mr. Huckleberry. Sorry about that. She hadn't goes out to begin with. So, if you took that, those COPS and didn't issue them, is roughly a half a million a year. Flood Control District is looking at, their budget this year is going to increase for CIP projects, eight point four million more than last year's contribution. And I know this would take a significant analysis, careful analysis of these projects, which ones are, can be maybe pushed out into the future without compromising safety or any services, if that's possible. I'm, I'm proposing that we maintain our same level of safety service and funding equivalent to this year, and reduce the pay-as-you-go by up to four, eight point four million dollars. And this is the starting point, as I said earlier. And then, moving on to the general fund balance, after we moved up the salary increases Supervisor Elias recommended, we moved them forward to July first, we're down to roughly thirty-nine million dollar balance in the reserve. So, if we took ten percent of that, which is three point nine million, it would still leave a healthy balance of about thirty-five million dollars. And, and then the question I did have on that, and obviously, people will need time to respond to this, is, is that balance of thirty-five million enough to keep us within the range of, of keeping our bond rating in a, in a safe area? And then, I went through and analyzed various expenditures by object code that, over the last five years, were overrunning. And just add, added those up, and it came to roughly, the average over the last five years is about thirty-five million dollars. And obviously, some of those are probably going to be offset by underruns elsewhere. But I think that we could, that would be a really good starting point to look into and see if there were, ask the county managers and department heads to go back and look at their budget, and look at those items that are, that are underrun, and, and determine whether or not there are more cuts that could possibly be made there. And I, I have quite a bit of detail on the criteria that I use for that. But I just wanted to, you know, put something on the table where we could begin a discussion. And these are possibly overestimated object expenses. And then, the vacancies, the vacant positions, Mr. Huckleberry identified, I think it was one thousand fifty total vacant positions. And we all know, we have to look at those very carefully, because they have been eliminated. And I know there was a, a big effort to do that in the last few years, to bring that down to the point where it's managing the attrition and hiring as needed. Pima County employees have carried a lot of additional, you know, workloads since the recession. And then, when I saw this memorandum that identified these vacancies, I went ahead and I did an analysis on this expense, and, you know, removing ones that were grants, and, you know, looking at the enterprise departments, et cetera. Roughly, conservatively, you know, there's about fifty million tied up in those, in the budget for vacancies, and that's a pretty conservative estimate. And understanding many of these do need to be hired, and we have to account for the attrition, and to provide a more accurate analysis. And I think Chuck stated approximately seven hundred of those vacancies are part of our attrition and turnover rate, if I recall correctly. You can correct me if I'm wrong. That leaves approximately three hundred and fifty vacant positions in a conservative range, at range of about fifty thousand per employee. That's a pretty significant amount of money. So, if we looked at that using the approach, taking down the vacancies from one thousand fifty to nine hundred and eighty, cutting seventy of those, that's about a three hundred, or excuse me, three point five million dollar that we could potentially put towards a tax-neutral budget. And I'm, again, I said I was presenting this because of Supervisor Validas' comment that good governance requires open dialogue. So, I wanted to put this on the table. And I know this is the first time that anyone is seeing this, so it probably won't have a lot of discussion today, or possibly will. And I'm aware the details of getting this done are a lot more difficult than just cutting and pasting and, and just saying, okay, here we go. So, I put this all together, and if you add up all those items, and the other one is the library, which I don't have in here, but that was a potential as well, the library going up, the rate going up two cents, which amounts to about, I think, one point seven million of their three point three million dollar increase. If there's any way we could push back some of the hiring, because I believe it was for twelve new positions, move that out, or possibly look at other ways to try to reduce that impact. And so, if I look at that total value, I, I came up with roughly fifty-one million there. And recognizing that the overestimated object codes, you know, by the time you get through and go through those, it probably won't be that full thirty-five million. But if I just look at that, and then I look at what we need to get to, to have a tax-neutral budget, so that we don't increase taxes, is roughly ten and a half million. I took the one point oh five percent that Mr. Huckleberry said was due to the new growth. I know these numbers won't be exact. But it's basically ten point five million that we have to come up with. And if you look at, it's less than twenty-one percent of the value of what we just talked about on these few items, that comes to ten point seven million. And if we take that twenty-one percent and apply it to the vacant positions, that means an elimination out of those one thousand fifty, fifteen positions, just to get revenue-neutral. And we're almost there. It's less than one percent reduction in the budget to get there. And I just wanted to put this on the table, and if anyone is interested in discussing it, I have more details. And I wanted to give it to you, Mr. Huckleberry, and all of the board members to see, give you time, because I appreciate last year that, you know, presenting this the day of the budget adoption was not going to work, and, and wasn't fair. So, at least we've got something on the table, and I don't know if other people have recommendations or suggestions to consider. But I wanted to get this out there, so that we had a point of discussion for the next board meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
I want to thank Supervisor Miller for this. I think there are certainly some items I'm willing to look at. And just, this is a question for Mr. Huckleberry. I, most of, I, I think the recommendations that Supervisor Miller is making are worthy of consideration. It all comes down to crunching the numbers. So, and I worry about the library, because that is one of the things our constituents actually use and benefit by, rather than the justice and law enforcement system, where most of our money goes. So, when do you think we could, we could have the information or have a response to her suggestions?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think we can respond to probably all of these and give the board some, some policy options, probably within the week. And so, I, I definitely think that, you know, you're going to look at adopting the final budget on the nineteenth. And so, I think by the Thursday before, so that gives Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, five days to look at kind of what, what our views of these proposals are, and to give you some options that talk about, if you want to do this, here's what you have, you know, kind of a back and forth that says, if you would like to do this, here's the impacts, and here's what we need to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
I too want to commend and show, express my appreciation to Supervisor Miller for putting these items out for discussion. I have just a couple of questions that she's brought forth, that for clarity, would it be appropriate, can I ask question, questions of them? You, you talked about certificates of participation and the use of them, and how you'd like to curtail them over a couple of, of years to accrue the interest rates that would normally have been applied to any new use of the COPS to pay for old debt. Am I clear in? Am I clear in, in assuming that, given that process, which you expressed, you, you do approve of the use of COPS?
No. I, I don't like the COPS, but I recognize, you know, we're in a situation, and I don't like that we're going around the expenditure limitation by utilizing the COPS. So I'm not a real fan of them. And, and as I pointed out, if you look at that hundred and seventeen million in COPS, we're paying twenty-five million in interest and, and issuance costs over the lifetime of those COPS. So I'd prefer that we use less of them. I, I recognize, you know, Mr., we're, we're between a rock and a hard spot right now that we can't totally stop using them. But I'd like to see less use of them. And, you know, I'm looking at a best case scenario here, the, the five hundred thousand savings would be, a best case scenario, if we didn't issue any more next year.
More than five hundred thousand savings, wasn't it?
No, if you, if you assume, what I did was I looked at the interest rates
Oh, I see what you're saying. Here we go.
On, on the outstanding COPS and I came up with an, the savings, if you invested those monies at that interest rate, that the COPS were.
I guess what I'm saying is, as a last resource or a last resort, given that the, the preceding procedure is followed of reducing or not using COPS, there might be instances where COPS could be justified?
I don't really like the use of COPS, period, but I, I am sure, you know, and, and I just think if, that the less, that's why requesting maybe we push some things out, maybe some capital expenditures. And, you know, some of the ones you look at is, could we, and that, here, I simply identified flood control, but there's other things that we could look at, obviously, but I just wanted to get something on the table. But, you know, I, I would like to avoid them as much as possible. But, you know, as we know, we've got these outstanding COPS now, but if we stopped issuing them, instead of making that twenty-five, we could invest that money, right? Invest that money. And, and I don't know if you saw the chart that Mr. Huckleberry presented. It was, where is it, right here? And he shows the annual payments, like, in 2020, it's twenty-seven point four million dollars. And so.
That's the figure I was looking at.
Right. Yeah, but I, I just took the average of the, because there was five years worth of COPS and I divided that total number of one hundred and seventeen by the five and came up with the average of, you know, close to twenty-four million. And then I took the interest rate, the average interest rate of all the, the various COPS and applied that. And so if you invested that money, instead of paying that COPS with it, you could earn roughly five hundred thousand, slightly more than that. But that's just a perfect case scenario if you, if you completely stop. So that's making some assumptions there that obviously we're not going to be doing. But I thought, you know, it's a starting point, a place to start looking for some savings.
And on pay as you go, do you foresee or do you, or do you feel that there might be procedural problems as to how that's managed? In other words, my understanding of pay as you go is we accumulate money and once that money is accumulated, it can be deliberated upon where it's been for various projects. Do you see anything that's on the horizon? Anything that's on the horizon that might cause, cause that procedure to become complicated or controversial?
Not, no. The board votes on those projects now. It, it's a decision by the board majority, so, and, and Mr. Huckleberry puts together a capital plan every year and the various departments do, so I, I don't see it, I don't think it would change anything.
Okay.
You know, I think we all vote on it and make that decision.
And finally, on the twenty-six billion dollars for roads, the Pima County Transportation Advisory Committee made a recommendation that, that monies be split five ways evenly amongst all the, the supervisory districts. Naturally, that's a kind of a PTAC item at this point to deliberate, but if that were indeed to be the case, what, what is your feeling on that money being evenly split?
I, 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 this is going to come before the board to be deliberated upon. I'd like it all in District One. Sharon wants it all in three, one, oh, four. You know, I think, you know, we can have that discussion and I know that, you know, we all have our feelings about the way things should be split and we can, I think, I, I hope we have an open discussion and we can come to a, a reasonable agreement. And if, you know, people feel very strongly that it should be evenly split and that's the way the board decides, I can live with that. As I said, I'd rather not have that, but, you know, we have to make sure we accommodate everyone and treat everyone fairly. So, and I, my, I think everyone here will have an open discussion. I think everyone here will come to a, a good decision, I hope.
And then your, your suggestion to take, I want to, I want to make sure that this is how it's being described, to make sure everything remains tax neutral? The monies, in order to do that, would, are you suggesting it might come from the, the reserve balance of, of three point?
This is just put forth as a possibility. And as you see, I was just talking about, let's take ten percent out of there and look at that. And then if we needed to get money from reserve, we could. And, and again, we'd need the analysis from Mr. Huckleberry as to what we need to do to maintain our bond rating. But if we were able to go down a little more, and obviously, you know, this is going to be, as he said, it's going to be a back and forth and we're going to have to look at every item carefully and make sure that, you know, we're not going to. But if you look at what I'm proposing to remain tax neutral out of the general fund, it's less than a million dollars. So, you know, and, and that's what I'm hoping, we can just get to a tax neutral budget, moving these money into roads, doing the pay as you go. I just think this is, trying to keep it so that taxpayers don't have to absorb another increase, I think, with the increased valuations, I think would, you know, make the residents of Pima County.
Well, I for one, want to thank you for your clarity and for putting these items out there. I think it's a terrific starting point and I'm, I'm very much in favor of continuing the discussion based, based upon these recommendations that Supervisor Miller has proposed. And I'm looking forward, forward to the analysis from the county administrator. But again, thank you Supervisor Miller for the, for this.
You're welcome.
Opportunity.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor. Mr. Chairman, I, I also want to thank Supervisor Miller for taking the heart, the discussion that we had last year, last year during the final budget adoption, because regardless of whether or not this comes, turns out, this is really worth talking about. If for nothing else, to make sure that we have a public discussion about these items. So I, I know that you're, you've, you're going to get the, the details over Mr. Huckleberry. And what I'd like to ask Mr. Huckleberry to do is a couple of different things. First, on a, on a macroscopic level, I'd like to hear in that, in that memorandum from Mr. Huckleberry, a, a really kind of cost benefit analysis to having a tax neutral budget. Obviously, there's, the benefit is that we're going to be tax neutral, but is there a cost to doing that? And if so, what is that? So the, the first question we need to answer is whether or not that's something worth achieving. And I, I don't know the answer to that right now. But certainly it is worth exploring and worth discussing in a, in a public venue. Then secondly, what I'd like to have in, as part of that discussion in that memorandum is I'm, I'm particularly concerned with the interplay between the, the expenditure cap and the pay as you go. Because it sounds really great to be able to get things in, out of the COPS so that we don't have a cost of money issue. But I don't know how you interplay the cost of, that with putting back into the, under the expenditure cap, the cost of those pay as you go items. So it may, there may be a practical issue in how we put that expenditure there. So I want that to be analyzed further because I'm really concerned that, that it work still. Because on, on the superficial level, it does sound like a really great idea, but I don't know whether or not if we're putting the entire amount of a project under the expenditure cap, whether that's going to force us into cutting other expenditures in other departments and other elected officials in the other parts of the budget. So there may be a practical aspect as to whether or not we can do that moving forward. Then second, then shifting back to that interplay again, I, I guess we need to do an analysis of whether or not which philosophy of, again, a cost benefit philosoph, of the philosophy between pay as you go as you accrue the money and pay as you go as you use three-year financing mechanism through the COPS, factoring obviously in there the cost of money that we just discussed in your discussion as well, as well as a timing issue. If we start pushing back projects, because obviously we've got an expenditure cap issue now, how does that, what does that mean in terms of infrastructure, roads and other things that we need to get done in terms of the community? We need to know the answer to the question so we can make a really informed decision as to whether or not that is worth moving forward, because if it isn't and it pushes necessary, projects that are necessary within the next two years, out to five, seven and eight years, and it creates a, a real issue, that, that could be an issue. So I want, I want to hear about those in, in the memo. And then obviously, other relevant factors that maybe we haven't thought about yet.
Yeah. Obviously, I, I didn't include the library because of the reasons that Supervisor Bronson brought up is because, you know, the libraries are a very valuable asset in the community. Also, on here, as you see, I, I have a hundred and five thousand attributed to the reduction in COPS and I do, I mean, we recognize, we, we are where we are and, and we're in a situation. I'd just like to see a, a move gradually away and not, obviously, all at once. And so I, I agree with you that, that there could be issues if we tried to do that. And, yeah, so I look forward to that analysis. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure I agree with anything Ellie said, but what I would say is that I, I do agree with her about salaries for our employees. They should start July one. I was succeeding, expecting them to start September one, but July one's great with me. So that would be my comment on it. And I'll be circumspect until I see some analysis from the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, I thought that you brought that up at the last meeting.
I did, but I suggested that the increased raise amount will start in September, as Mr. Huckleberry had suggested, as opposed to July one, like you suggested in your comments.
Oh, I thought you said July one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm opt out for July one. It's all good with me.
I thought you were pulling it back to July one.
I'm not going to fight on that one. But I'll remain circumspect on the rest of it until I see some analysis.
I want to look at that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, just one observation regarding the roads, and I, I guess I can't help myself.
Sure.
But twenty-six.
Isn't there a bunch of people on the T-PAC or T, what's the, what's the name of that transportation committee?
There is.
Is there a bunch of people that like roads?
Yeah, apparently so.
So, God, doesn't that make them the same as Klepsy?
I, I don't think this is, that's a good analysis at all.
I was just wondering out loud. It's okay, go ahead Supervisor, I'm sorry I interrupted.
No, you're not.
All right, I'm not.
When, when you have twenty-six billion dollars a year and we look at the amount of money out there that we really need to address our roads and you divide that into the amount we need in the years, what, what are we looking at, Mr. Huckleberry, on that regard? It should be maintained that we still have a, a funding issue and we've all acknowledged that on, on our road repair.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, it's a long time. And I think if you, you know, think of our maybe unincorporated road repair, it's in this range of depending upon who you ask and, and, you know, what condition they want to see all our roads in, anywhere from probably six hundred, eight hundred million dollars. So you can start doing the math, divide twenty-six into that, it gets to be a long time. With the exception that, as you recall, in this pay as you go structure, I was building that contribution up about five million dollars a year and that's the same ti, at the same time, we're seeing increased revenues in HERF and VLT and reduced debt service. So that twenty-six was growing to a fairly large number within five years. And so it's, and it's all problematic. And I think the issue is, is how do you assume, how fast do we, and, and this is a good discussion because frankly, what it means is how fast do you want to transition to pay as you go? And we can have a long discussion on the COPS because I think we need to decide the COPS, and we've done it a little bit, but we've just done them by years, is in the short term and medium term. We don't have any real long term. And then look at the cost in the short term and the medium term, and is there a way to accelerate the medium term payoff so that that interest, you know, drain is reduced? You know, and the final analysis to COPS is a, is the question of expenditure limit voter increase. So you've got to basically have the voters really understand what an expenditure limit is. And if it's increased, you don't have to go through these gyrations that cost them money. That's a hard sell, but I think that's the reality. And those are the kind of things that we can explain in a little more detail in the memorandum that we can prepare on the alternatives.
Mr. Chairman, and, and that is why I attributed just that small hundred and five thousand dollar amount out of there, is recognizing that obviously, we're not going to be able to do this quickly, transition, but if we could head in that direction without the debt, we'll be able to, because our debt is also going down, what is it, going down from sixty-nine cents to fifty-two cents next year, if fiscal year 2021?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I think it's seventeen cents. And so, and again, and the, the way we structured, and again, it's really the board's decision, we actually, in, in growing the pay as you go fund, only took half of that in this forecast. And so as it dropped, we only moved half of it into the primary, knowing that we still needed to try and drop the primary.
Right.
And as I said, as you, as you, you can build this pay as you go fund the way we did, which was giving back about, and that's why we're having to do these truth and taxation notices, we gave back about half of the appreciation. And so there comes a point where you build a fund enough that you can then return to the, you know, and have a consistent tax neutral levy. But, but it depends upon, you know, as one example says, well, if you want to not do pay as you go this year, what we probably put in somewhat of jeopardy is the five million dollar general fund transfer unless we want to do something more with the fund balance. But on, on the other hand, you could next year say, I want to take the full seventeen cents and push it to basically the pay as you go fund. And because in, in the debt service fund, there is no truth and taxation notice requirements because it's voter approved. So it's, whether it goes up or goes down, requires no real notice on truth and taxation.
Thank you.
Very good. That was actually a rational conversation.
Sort of.
Ah, not on my part. Okay, we're on to item seven, Board of Supervisors' new policy.
I'll move the item. I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just had some questions. We have this profile of what it looks like for the, be right there, for the public safety personnel retirement system. You have the accrued liability of the assets, the accrued liability and the part that is unfunded. So we're funded by forty-one percent. Do we have that same type of data on all of the other, the other three?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes, we do. And this one is, you know, the, the legislature has attempted to fix the elected official one retirement plan. There's, you know, there's a, there's a piece of legislation that went into effect and little, little counties got held harmless and so the state paid their share, we're paying our share. But we can do that for every one of our retirement plans.
Okay.
And this is the one that's probably in the worst shape.
Yeah.
And I think because statewide, these public safety retirement plans are, are problematic, the legislature then required, passed a law that says that we have to adopt a policy that talks, what, we're doing exactly what the legislation requires.
That we're going to be fully funded after eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
Because we're, basically, our unfunded is for past, right? That we're trying to play catch up on.
Yes.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, what happens is that the legislature's restructured some of the, you know, entry new law enforcement officers. And so as you move through and retire, the one group and the other group pays a little more, you work yourself out of this problem, but it's going to take, as they say, at this current actuarial rate, eighteen years.
Yeah, that's a long time. And, and, and so could we get a copy of those others that are, and we don't have to have a policy on the others, it's just the public safety.
Just this one.
They just passed the legislation for this one.
And we can give you that information, all, all the others, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to a good explanation about how downgrading public safety. public safety employees from having real pensions to having a 401K is really good for us. Because I'm not so sure that's good for our police officers and our sheriffs. Nevertheless, we have a motion on the floor? And a second? Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item eight. Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr...
I'm sorry, any objections? I knew I forgot something on this item. How could that have happened, Ellie?
You let that slip. I object, thank you.
And I object as well.
Well, somehow that's not unexpected. Motion carries three to two. Okay, we're on to items nine, 10, 11. Actually, if nobody's interested in separating it out, I would move the remainder of the addendum. Motion and a second, discussion? Objections, hearing none, motion carries. Hearing no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.